We're going to call the meeting to order at 3:30 PM. We're going to start with a moment of reflection and pledge allegiance to the flags led by trustee Anderson.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
While we wait for roll call, I just want to say thank you so much to all the parents and staff and everyone who's here today. This is a really important topic and thank you to those streaming from home and for those of you unable to make the either the live recording or in person. We look forward to speaking with you at your sites on topics relevant to your zones with middle school electives.
Trustee Barto?
Here.
Trustee Metoyer?
Here.
Trustee Crane?
Here.
Trustee Anderson?
Here.
Trustee Ershurlu?
Here.
Trustee Weigand?
Here.
Trustee Yelsey?
Here.
Dr. Smith?
Here.
And now we move on to adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
The adoption has been, uh, adoption of the agenda has been moved by trustee Metoyer, seconded by trustee Yelsey. Roll call vote.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Metoyer?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Ershurlu?
Yes.
Trustee Weigand?
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey?
Yes.
And now we move to community input on special agenda items only.
This is an opportunity for the public to address the board regarding items on a special meeting agenda only. Comments on special meeting agenda items are limited to three minutes per comment, up to 20 minutes per topic. A speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another person.
Okay, we have two, we have six comments. We'll start, I'll read, um, well, I'll give you the names of, so you know who's at. First, we have Michelle Erickson, then we'll have Bridget Duffin, and then we'll have Tamara Fairbanks.
Good afternoon, School Board trustees and district leaders. Thank you for making this meeting possible. My name is Michelle Erickson. Our children currently attend Victoria Elementary. After this, we intend for them to attend T-Winkle and eventually Estancia. I'd appreciate your consideration for the following as you work to improve and expand elective offerings. At a minimum, in the fall of 2022, T-Wink will have equitable elective offerings when compared to Enson. Spanish and drama will be offered. The music program will once again offer high level sections and opportunities. Set a standard for what the minimum elective core courses that must be offered at each middle school. For example, each middle school will offer at least 15 electives and meet the area requirements of music, art, language, arts, science, STEM. Consider an elective semester rotational wheel. Does Avid in any way take up space in the master schedule that prohibits more traditional electives from being offered? What percent of T-Winkle students are enrolled in Avid and never take anything else? It could be argued that an exploration of different topics like woodshop, creative writing, art, home ec. Might spark an interest and determination to attend college. Can avid skills and teachings be incorporated into core courses? Each middle school should match their elective offerings with the career pathways offered at their corresponding high schools. Expand hands-on learning experiences with electives such as woodshop, dance, culinary photography. I believe the district staff and board has a unique opportunity to improve and transform middle school education, not only for students at T-Winkle, but for students across the district. Middle school can be a challenging transition for young students. I encourage you to think outside the box. What can we do as a district board and community to make a student's middle school experience more than the dreaded two years between elementary and high school? How can we inspire students with unique hands-on elective offerings that may one day lead to a career? What would it take to make T-Winkle the number one choice of parents and students across the district? Working towards anything less is unacceptable. Thank you for your time and consideration, Michelle Erickson.
Thank you. Next, we have Bridget Duffin.
Hello, President Barto, trustees, superintendent Smith, and cabinet members. First of all, thank you for this study session. I know you have our community's best interests at heart. My name is Bridget Duffin. I'm the parent of a sixth and eighth grade, uh, eighth grade students in Newport Mesa. I've taught elementary music in our district since 2002, primarily in the Estancia zone. In elementary school, we see our kids blossom in band, choir, orchestra, and school musicals. Thankfully, our district has really supported elementary music programs with funding for staffing, instruments, sheet music, and repairs. My orchestra kids tell me things like "music is life," with a renewed sense of school pride and the upper elementary grades. They participate in these programs from fifth to, or sorry, fourth to sixth grade. At Adams, I taught about one-fourth of the population in my orchestra. Many of my students who I would consider to be high achievers disappear from our school zone in middle school. Where do they go? I find that they have transferred to Mesa and Enson. Parents tell me they're excited that their child can be in multiple electives at Mesa, and they brag on Facebook that they can march in the band with high schoolers, be in school plays, join the advanced ensembles due to their advancement in our elementary ensembles. At T-Winkle, we don't have those options. To use my son as an example, he participated in student council, robotics, and band in elementary school, but he couldn't, could not join ASB, Project Lead the Way, or band at T-Winkle due to scheduling issues. His assigned election elective was orchestra, which he didn't request. I had to make numerous calls and emails to get him into one of his four requested electives. We were told that to keep his honor schedule, his only other elective option would be beginning band. He loves band and continued with it this year in eighth grade, but I take issue that as an eighth grader, he is in beginning band for the fifth year in a row. As a music teacher and band mom, I hope we can get back to the place where we offer advanced instrument ensembles to the many students who have played their instrument in band and orchestra for three years at Adams, California, Pomona, Ray, Victoria, and Wilson. Unfortunately, my husband and I felt like our son wasted his time this past year and a half by not being able to advance in band. While he was happy at T-Winkle, this has been disappointing and frustrating for us. Looking to the future, here are our hopes for T-Winkle. To continue the art class elective that was added this year, my daughter is very excited. She wants to be an art teacher, so, and she wants to go to T-Winkle. We'd like to see drama added, as every Newport Mesa middle school puts on plays and musicals except for ours, as far as I know. To see Spanish added as an elective, to see advanced band and orchestra ensembles reinstated, to reach the kids who need that spark of joy at school through their elective. And in closing, a student's elective should be a major motivator for school attendance, a skillmaker, a confidence builder, educate the whole child, and just be plain fun for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Tamara Fairbanks, and then after that Laura Vandemergel and Sarah Awater.
Hello, dear President Barto, board members, Dr. Smith, and honored guests. I thank you for taking the time to discuss elective opportunities for our middle school students. I believe rich offerings such as vocal instrumental music, general music, dance, art, and foreign language at our middle schools would offer our children the school, the tools they need to be competitive in the future. Prior to my career at Newport Mesa, I taught middle school in the Inland Empire, Rhode Island, and in Ohio. In each of these settings, the standard was to always have full-time visual art, visual and performing arts teachers, as well as foreign language. The schools that had a traditional schedule offered a wheel between general music and art, while foreign language and/or vocal instrumental music was a year-long commitment course and/or second elective. There are so many ways to do the master schedule to offer arts offerings during a zero period, as well as utilizing dance as a PE credit. I believe it is in NMUSD's best interest to look at models in places outside of Orange County to see the various courses that may benefit our students and the high schools that they matriculate to. As an employee who have been, who have been, who have seen students leave our district due to the lack of course offerings in the arts and middle school level, believe that we are at the right moment to pivot to a positive change where our education becomes holistic, creative, and innovative. The elementary schools feeding into T-Winkle have huge choirs, musical theater programs, and large string programs. Having a show choir at T-Winkle alone would recruit the 300-plus students who already participate in musicals at the elementary level. I ask you to look at our students, their interests, and provide, and to provide vast offerings so they can continue to groom their talents. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, we have Laura Vandemergel.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Laura Vandemergel, and I currently have a third grader at Victoria Elementary, and I have a seventh grade daughter attending T-Winkle. Last May, I was very disappointed to see the limited number of electives offered at T-Winkle. My daughter loves art and drawing, so she was hoping there would be an art elective, and at that time, there was not, so she settled on publications. As an elementary school educator for over 20 years, middle school is new to me, besides being a former student of a middle school. I thought maybe all NMUSD's school sites were similar, and I even encouraged other parents that wanted to send their kids to Mesa and Enson to send their kids to T-Winkle, because let's support our Estancia zone. But upon further examination, that was not the case. It's not all the same, and it looks as though that student diversity, socioeconomic status, English language learner designation, and the population percentage of students with disabilities seems to indicate that if a student is cool, uh, of, of color, poor, or identified with a disability, they'll end up at T-Winkle, which is probably not true, but if you look at the data, that's what it says, and they will have fewer opportunities as compared to their peers at all the other middle schools, which is shameful. As a parent with a child that's twice exceptional, this is extremely upsetting to me. And as a teacher in Santa Ana Unified, that's my community. That's why I love the Estancia zone. That's my people, my neighborhood, my students. So, I emailed you all the data. You know it, it's in the SARC, the School Accountability Report Card, found easily online. So, we have an equity problem, and I know it's about electives, but electives and equity are synonymous. And so, our T-Winkle students are only able to do what they have access to. Right now, they don't have access. So, they get one elective as compared to their peers at the other sites. No child goes to school for Avid. No child goes to school for the core. They go for the arts. They go for music. They go for cross-country and sports and drama and all the fun things, and there is nothing funny, fun about Avid. And if you look at the percentage of students that are in Avid at T-Winkle, I'm sure it is so much higher than all the other sites. Let's do something to provide our students with a reason to come to school, a chance to expand their horizons, and be successful. Let's give them voice and choice, and by giving them more than just a handful of electives, they will indeed have voice and choice. They will have the opportunities to grow and continue to do the things they love. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Sarah Awater.
Good af, good afternoon, everybody. It's good to see you, Dr. Smith, and President Barto, and everyone else. Forgive me, I didn't wear my board duds today. Going to read from my phone, but don't be alarmed, I'm not going to make a really offensive World War II comparison. So, I'm going to read a letter from a teacher that couldn't be here today, and then I want to provide, um, a, a short bit of information that apparently Avid is often confused with Avid Excel. And so, for the conversation today, Avid is, is separate, and kids choose and apply to Avid, and then Avid Excel, kids are, are forced to take those, or for, I, I, you know, whatever word you want to use, but they're compelled to take it, and that is, she told me, very important. Hello, NMUSD Board of Education. Sorry, I was unable to attend today in person. My name is Tammy Milkie, the school counselor for T-Winkle Middle School. I have been part of NMUSD for 21 years as a school counselor, and seven of those years have been at T-Winkle. I am the frontline person who deals with all the parent phone calls, the parent emails, the parent walk-ins to my office, the parent frustrations for their children, the student walk-ins to my office, the student frustrations, and the student disappointments when it comes to their class schedule and their elective choices at T-Winkle. Bottom line, there are very few choices for T-Winkle students. T-Winkle students have very few choices. Their choices are band, one section, orchestra, one section, and vocal, one section, or project lead the way. New this year, it, new this year is three sections of art, but we cut our music sections to add that. We do offer ASB, Avid, and publications, but students must apply and be selected for those electives, and we only offer ASB, uh, one section publications, and Avid, three sections each grade level. Also, there are approximately 60 students who are forced to be in Avid Excel, four sections based on data used by NMUSD administration, and those students do not even get an opportunity to choose any elective they would like to take. Elective courses allow a student to take a break from their rigor academic, their, their, their academic courses they have. Elective courses are designed for a student to want to participate in because they selected it, not because it's forced, it's forced on them. Electives offer students an opportunity to explore and learn more about an area they've never been exposed to. Also, it expands their knowledge base and should be cla, a class to enjoy. T-Winkle students have five classes that they must take for academic rigor. They should be allowed to choose their one elective class that they would like and look forward to as well, not be forced to take something because...
Sarah, that's the time, I'm sorry.
Of the lack of choice.
Would you, would you mind passing, we'd love to read the rest of it, yeah, yeah. Thank you, sorry, we didn't get to hear the whole thing. Okay, uh, next, we have Nicholas Dix, and then after that Carrie Bozenelik.
Good afternoon, everyone. Like Sarah, you know, and as you know, many of our members couldn't be here because of the timing of this study session, so I'd like to read another letter and to the record for your consideration. Good evening, Superintendent Smith and esteemed board members. My name is Jacqueline Washington, and I'm currently a teacher and instructional coach at T-Winkle Middle School. In the 20-plus years that I've worked for NMUSD as a teacher, district tosa, and coach, I've also led the Avid program at T-Winkle. Since 2000, our team has worked hard to create and maintain a successful Avid elective that is highly requested by both students and families in the community. We have averaged over 140 applications each year, proving that our students choose to be part of our program. In fact, with only six sections, we have more applicants than spaces available. I understand that there is a study session going on to possibly add additional electives at T-Winkle. This seems like a great effort for our students. However, that should not take away from the established sought-after and beneficial elective such as Avid. Our program not only feeds into Estancia's program, but has supported...
Mr. Dix, would you mind speaking a little slower?
Oh, sorry.
So that I can, I can take it all in?
All right, sorry. Force of habit, I see the clock over there, and I get, go faster. I understand that there is a study session going on, and to possibly add additional electives at T-Winkle, this seems like a great effort for our students. However, this should not take away from the established sought-after and beneficial elective such as Avid. Our program not only feeds into Estancia's program, but has supported the success of thousands of students in their quest to attend college, with some winning over $10,000 in scholarships and being accepted into prestigious universities. While we support adding more electives and student choice, we would love to be able to continue to offer our current number of sections as Avid is a program that truly benefits student success. Thank you for your time and consideration, Jacqueline Washington, T-Winkle Middle School, Avid teacher and instructional coach. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you wanted to, and if you wanted to send that into us too, we'll, we'll take that too. Thank you. And thank you for slowing down. Next, we have Carrie Bozenelik. Hope I got your name right.
You got pretty close. I'm Carrie Bozenelik. Thank you, a good evening, and I want to say first of all, thank you for having this study session. I appreciate that it's on the calendar. I, I've mentioned before, I would have appreciated it if it could have been the evening, because I think we would have had better, or more attendance in the evening. But I'm glad that it's on the calendar. And I emailed, but I'm going to just reiterate a little bit about what was in my email. My primary concern about electives at T-Winkle has to do with the fact that there's no foreign language offered there. I think foreign language is very important for students who eventually want to apply for college, because it's usually a requirement for most California colleges. And also, I think it's common knowledge that the earlier you start learning the foreign language, the better off you are, so. In particular, I was concerned because I realized that the other Newport Mesa middle schools offer foreign languages, and some of them offer multiple foreign languages. And I also spent a little bit of time calling around other Orange County middle schools, and I called 30 schools, and 29 of them offered Spanish, and the one who didn't offered Korean. So, I'm very concerned that T-Winkle doesn't offer any foreign language. And also beyond that, I'm also generally concerned about electives at T-Winkle. My understanding is that this study session is meant to study electives at all of the district middle schools, but I think you probably realize you're hearing from parents who are concerned about T-Winkle particularly, and I think that T-Winkle needs special attention in that regard. And so, to help further that, I'm hoping that, um, this district can put a town hall meeting, I've forgotten the term, but town hall meeting for T-Winkle on its calendar coming up soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
And please have that in the evening, I think that's important.
Thank you, and just, and to reiterate, we will be having meetings at each zone site in the evenings for, for parents specifically coming to town halls. But, yeah.
No, and I don't doubt that, but I'd request that T-Winkle is a priority.
Yeah, thank you. Additionally, I wanted to share that we received comments from many, many parents via email, as well as teachers across all zones, particularly T-Winkle, but across all zones. It was really insightful for me to see all of the, um, different feedback from parents, and I look forward to hearing from staff and, you know, in the future from parents as well. Moving on, we will move on to item seven, our study session, beginning at 3:52.
Well, good afternoon, everyone, President Barto, Superintendent Smith, trustees and executive cabinet, and our guests this evening. Pleasure to be here today and speak to you on the topic of middle school electives. I'd like to thank the secondary leadership team for being present today. We have our principals in the room who are equally invested in the pathway connections through the seven through 12 program. As we move on through the afternoon, um, we are going to engage several different members of our team today to present information and clarify anything that comes our way and any questions. So, I wanted to make sure we knew that our, our middle school team is here today. We have Dr. Mike Shaka, who is our Director of Teaching and Learning for Secondary, who has been supporting the effort in the information gathering and the direction and course of study in his new role this year. We have Dr. Potness, who is our distinguished leader at T-Winkle, present with us today. Dr. Gogel, who is our principal at CDM Middle School. Dr. Quong, who is our principal at Costa Mesa Middle School. And Samantha Payne, our newest principal to the group at Enson Intermediate. And so, again, we have a distinguished team today who will be participating at some level in the conversation. And I do appreciate everyone being here. We have a lot to talk about today, and we've heard from many different constituents. Obviously, our Board of Education exceptionally interested in the topic. We've had community members, as you've heard, bring this item forward. And so, we definitely are going to address many of the ideas, thoughts, and concerns that have been shared, not only what you've heard today through the public comments, but also through emails and other correspondence. So, we're going to be hearing a lot of different things today. We're going to hear today a lot about purpose. You know, one of the things that we want to ensure that we talk about is what are we doing with middle schools, and what is the purpose of a middle school? We'll briefly touch on what does the research say? Talk about our schools and our programs. That's where we will engage our principals to speak about their schools. What do our stakeholders think? And our process for change, opportunities that lie ahead, and next steps. And so, in our time together today, that is our focus, and we are excited to be able to present different information in each of those areas. In front of you, just so you know, trustees, you do have a copy of the presentation in front of you. You also have a binder with you that has additional information that perhaps you had requested or another trustee had requested. It's also a great reservoir for the additional information that will come out of tonight that you may want to have, and you'll have a place to store it. And we will get you spines for your binders so that you can have that on your shelf. That was a request today. So anyhow, those items that are in your binder may not be present publicly in the presentation because those are things that were requested, but they're great resources for you to think through. So, when we take a look at middle school, we have to remember what the purpose of middle school is. We are so fortunate, because we're all in this room, that we work in a K-12 district. And that is one of the unique features in a K-12, is that you can see students through, from preschool, all the way until they graduate. And that is the beauty of a K-12 system. In this case, I should say a PK-12 system. And when you take a look at middle school, it is a unique time in life, and you can all reflect back on your middle school moment, as I call it, because in, you know, in a two-year program especially, it's, it goes by very quickly. But it's really designed to meet those unique developmental needs of students in, you know, that are about 11 years old to 14, who are leaving elementary school, and they're leaving that one classroom environment, and they go into a mixed environment. And it really is meeting the needs of students at where they're at. So, middle school really advocates for the student, and you've heard that today from some of our public comments. To serve as an educational program that really prepares them for high school, and so that's why our high school principals are in the room, because they're eager to make sure that all these connections that we create lead our students into a more successful high school experience. That's a really important piece to middle school that we can't forget. And then, of course, to provide, what we also have heard today is the developmentally appropriate education social experiences. We all attend school, but we want to, want to attend school. We want to love to go to school. We want to have those engaging moments in school and those social, social experiences that will again help connect us to high school. Those are exceptionally important. So, when we talk today, we always want to keep those in the back of our mind. This is a different experience than elementary. It's also a different experience than high school. The case for electives. So, if you really take a look at why we have electives in school, there's lots of research, excuse me, that is presented that talks about the why and the case for electives. A vibrant program in seven through 12 schools is exceptionally important, and it is as important as having the regular core classes. So, having something for students to connect to, to be passionate about beyond reading, language, beyond mathematics and science, to have students connect is exceptionally important. That leads into voice and choice, and we heard someone comment on that today. Students in middle school start to experience independence, not only in their behaviors, but in their thinking, and they want to be able to say and have a say in what they want to do. This is their first opportunity to kind of flex their muscles. They didn't get that necessarily deeply in elementary school, but they start to get that in middle school. You want to introduce them to high interest content. It's very important that what we provide as a district is high interest. It's relatable, it's relative, rigorous, and has those connections, which we'll talk about in just a little bit. You want to create an awareness for post-secondary opportunities. So, when you are sitting in a classroom in middle school, or you're selecting your schedule with your counselor, those are conversations that are happening. What do you want to be when you grow up? We ask that question a lot over a child's lifetime, but once it comes to middle school, it kind of becomes reality. What do you start to enjoy? What do you start to love? What are you passionate about? What are your inklings? Are you, where, where do you feel connected in the content? And our counselors do wonderful work in drawing that out of students, but then they need those landing spots. Where are they going to go? What classes would they take? Engagement, that is so important at the middle school level. The research supports that we start to lose students in grades eight and nine. And so, that's where you have large levels of attrition in K-12 education, where, um, we really, really struggle with some of our ninth grade classes as they come in, because they are not engaged. And that starts in middle school. And so, a lot of our high school principals in the room will... in middle school. And so a lot of our high school principals in the room will shake their head, and I know they will, that we focus a lot of our work on that ninth grade cohort because if they become disengaged in middle school, chances are they're going to be disengaged in high school. And that becomes a real challenge. All electives should support the core. So when we work with our elective teachers, whether it's our VAPA teachers, foreign language, STEM, they have core connections, meaning they tie back to and show relevancy and application in mathematics and English and social studies and science. And of course, we want our kids to develop all of their talents and skills. And again, I describe that as an inkling, but what are the things that our students are good at and that they want to develop? So again, reflection when we are looking at our programs today, asking ourselves as a team, is this what we're providing? When we talk about expanding electives in any setting, whether it's, you know, high school or a middle school, these are things that we want to really reflect on as well. And there is research that was provided by Hanover, which is a large research organization that takes in information from multiple different places within the global connections, and really takes a look at what are we supposed to do when we are forming a middle school? So when you are looking at a middle school schedule, what should we take into consideration? Again, the self-awareness, deepening skills. Be confident and positioned to make informed choices. That's something that starts to happen, and students get confident in what they want to do. They start to believe in self, and if we don't engage them, actually they have disbelief in self, and they lose the confidence and they break. So middle school is really important. When we're looking at expanding those electives, we're looking at giving a student the ability to be confident in coursework that's going to carry them forward. They may not be the top math student. They may not be the best writer in their English class, but maybe they are in robotics, in PLTW, in music. That builds confidence. Confidence breeds success. Develop those technical skills. You want to create an actionable plan for high school and gain awareness again to the variety of subjects. So you want to expose students to many different things as possible. Turnaround research is evident right now in educational research, and really that's looking at how are we redesigning and turning around middle schools within our country? And there was some research done by the University of Massachusetts and the Massachusetts, I can't say that word very well, Mass., as I call it, UMass, Department of Education that really refined their educational program specifically for middle grades. And they came up with four things we need to pay attention to, which is important for us to talk about today. Leadership and collaboration, and that's the leaders we have in the room that are leading the work at the school sites. The intentional practice for improving instruction, we'll dig into that. Student supports and instruction for all students, and then school climate and culture. So these are the four factors that if you're going to turn around a school today with all that we know and all that exists in our world in 2022, these are the things that we need to consider. Effective practices. So what does that mean? And this is where I'm so excited to have, you know, our Director of Teaching and Learning in both elementary and secondary. We've got our Director of Assessment. We have people who can provide us this information. Monitor the data. The work is in the details. So one of the things we added this year at the secondary level was graduation coach slash admin interns who are focusing in on some of our students who struggle. How do we know that? Because we've monitored the data. We are digging in deep, and the work is in the details. So when we talk about today, about electives and offerings and where we want to go, and maybe where we want to dream big or wherever we want to pull back, we need to look at data. We need to make sure that we're paying attention to what the numbers tell us and what the microdata tells us, which is at the student level. That's exceptionally important. We need to pay attention to equity. We use that word a lot, but equity is met when you give students what they need when they need it. Equity is not always the same thing everywhere. Equity is giving a student what they need to achieve when they need it, and we want to keep that in mind today. Identity, excuse me, identify data and demonstrate student need and interest. And so we want to ensure that we're gathering that as we go on, that we're collecting student data and information through surveys and whatnot to see what students want and need. Evaluate your quality of instruction and curriculum available to students. That's what we're kind of here to do today, is we are taking a look at what we do. We want to elevate the curriculum and ensure students are exposed, and we want to shift that climate and culture to reflect student populations and take a look at that STEM CTE and AVID, all those great programs that connect to the core. And that's what we're, that's what we want to continue to focus on. And the data is really important, and you'll hear us refer to that every now and then, that we need to go back to the data. Guiding questions for us as a leadership team here in Newport Mesa. We can only do so much, only because we're going to look at schedules, and you look and you say, gosh, we only have X amount of students. We have this many, you know, this much staff, this much students. So what do we do? How do we make our choices? So balance. Balance is important. What is the appropriate level of balance between your core classes and your electives? Schedule. How should elective courses be scheduled in relation to the core? What do we put in there? How much? My personal favorite as a leader of secondary education is alignment. How does what we do align to our students moving up into the high school, who eventually will move out into post-secondary opportunities? And how does it align to what we're doing in sixth grade? So you have to look left and right. In middle school, I loved that. As a principal, I used to say, I can look left, I can look right, because what I'm doing matters to both ends as a middle school person. So we want to keep that in mind today. Equity. What is the number or percentage of students that should be served? And then how does it reflect what we, how does our instructional program reflect our student population? We've heard some comments about that today and through our email correspondence with the community, but how does it really reflect the students we serve? And we have to be thoughtful about that. And again, look at the data. Time and minutes. We only have so much time in the day. And so how much should be spent in core versus electives? How do we adjust minutes? How do we adjust courses? And then depth of program and relevancy, which we also heard a comment on today is, you know, how rich is our program? How deep does our program go at our middle schools? And, you know, I heard someone mention, you know, specifically T-Winkle today. We need to take a look at whether or not we're providing that rich depth of opportunity for students within the limitations that we have and that balance. You know, what can we do? And then, of course, the whole child approach. That's exceptionally important in middle school. So when we look at balance, I just wanted to share this with you. Some of you may be familiar with John Hattie's work. John Hattie is a famous researcher in education who looked at over 800 different items, and he conducted 800 meta-analyses. And he determined that there are some things that are super important to a child's education and things that are not. So there's, you know, again, a list of many. And when you look at these numbers, if you were to get closer to the number one, the number one equals two years of student achievement growth. Okay? So when you're looking at standard deviations, in this case in his work, one equals two years of student achievement. So when you look at reading and vocabulary, time in the core, it's very important. Mastery, learning, math. So if you're looking at those top three, those are exceptionally important to a student's education. Concentration or persistence within the core, time on task. Teacher-student relationship actually ranks right up there with almost the most important thing. By the way, homework's not up there if you hadn't noticed. I don't think it ranks, it's at the very bottom. And then you have direct instruction, which happens within the core many times, and then your career interventions. So I pulled out, and there's a whole book if anybody's interested, but I pulled out the ones that were relevant to our conversation today. Because again, it's just framing the work. It's looking at the data. What do we need to be concerned or considerate of? And those are things that we do need to focus on. And to know that if we add career interventions and CTE into our coursework, we're going to get some bang for a buck there. Kids are going to be connected to their teachers, and they're going to have time on task, and they're going to show student growth and student achievement growth. Alignment. Super important. Again, this is where we call them connections because we want to make sure that what we're doing is typically not in isolation. So while we will have some standalone classes, and every district, by the way, does, we really do try to connect to our CTE pathways at the high school. And in your folder, which you do not have to refer to now, Lysa Snowden, who's also in the office, in the audience today, who is our CTE coordinator, provided those to us. And so those are there for you. But if you look at this graphic, it really does show, we need to start in elementary school. You have themes that emerge in middle school, and by the time they're in high school, those are strong connections that should be made. They can increase college eligibility and employability. At the end of the day, I mean, I have a nine-year-old, but at the end of the day, whatever she chooses, she needs to be employable, and she needs to have the ability to engage in the workforce somewhere, you know? So our goals are, no matter where your child is in the spectrum of education, that's where we want them. So everything we do needs to increase that opportunity for students to be eligible and employable. Our high school principals focus terribly, in the great way, on college eligibility, readiness, and success post-secondary. Their whole mission in high school is to get them to be able to do that. And our mission in middle school is to get them prepared for that. So you want to keep that alignment going. Some examples of alignment that occur right now beyond the CTE pathways that you have in front of you are things like the dual immersion programs that were started in elementary. So we heard some comments today about language and how important global languages or languages other than English are to students. And Newport recognized that and started dual immersion programs, and we're very proud of those. I had a chance, John allowed me to go to College Park and hang out with the elementary team for a while, and I got to go see actually both of those programs and what rich learning experiences for those students. And now they're going to be able to bounce up to middle school, have that language. And then I was over at Costa Mesa in the Mandarin program and experiencing that. So that's what you want to do, is you want to have these great, rich opportunities for alignment where they exist. Other things that we have are robotics and engineering, drama, performing arts and music. We're starting a heritage language program at Ray that's going to be starting up very soon. We are doing heritage language work right now at T-Winkle after school. So again, knowing and recognizing that that was important, we've been able to plant some seeds throughout the district. But let's not lose focus of this because this is exceptionally critical to the work.
Would you mind clarifying heritage language program? I'm not familiar with that term.
Sure. So we use that term when we're describing a language program where we're teaching students how to speak and early acquisition of language, but they're not taking a full course. They're not immersed in it, and at the secondary level, they're not receiving credit for it. So it's kind of an after-school program, if you would, that happens to teach language.
Thank you.
So that's something that we're starting. And John, would you let me know when that was starting? I know it's coming soon, if it hadn't already.
I believe, and I know Laura is in the audience or was, maybe she has left, but I believe it's in the beginning of spring, Laura.
April and May.
And we're running it initially as a pilot, so it'll be one day a week. We'll have seven lessons and then determine whether to expand or not from there.
And that's really how we plant seeds, to figure out what's going to grow, where the interest is. And so, and it's going to be awesome to see how that continues to grow and whether or not we have more interest that is birthed out of that opportunity. One of the other things that's exceptionally important and that we've heard a lot about, and we've heard many comments regarding equity, and again, what is equity? We can use that word in many different ways, but for our conversations today, we want to ensure that we have a culture of equity that really centers on the voices and experience of the most underserved in all decisions. And so when we say underserved, we're talking about that access point. So we're here today to talk about electives at all of our schools, and we're here to look at access. But are we concentrating the conversation on those that don't have access? So we want to focus and ground ourselves today in that. And then again, equity is achieved when all students receive the resources they need when they need them, to prepare them, in our case, in education, for graduation and success after high school. And how do we, how do we reach equity or equitable decisions? We look at data, and we determine if we're meeting their needs, and we ask ourselves questions. We look at our students, and we refer to our current offerings. We look at what students tell us. We listen to what parents have to say. And then we take a look again at that depth of program and see whether or not those courses are representative of academics, inquiry, skill, and is there enough for students to choose from? We heard a lot of conversations about AVID, and one of the interesting pieces is that AVID, for those of you who are familiar with the program, provides a tremendous opportunity for students to have a pathway for college who may not, may not have experienced that before they've been part of the program. So the AVID elective itself is a tremendous opportunity. We have great programs at our high schools that continue the program. AVID Excel is an option for students to take that actually helps them with their English language learner skills. And so that's, I want to say, almost a conversation for another day, but that's also an equitable opportunity for students who need those language acquisition skills, who need the study skills. AVID Excel actually is their ELD, so to speak. And so that is for a certain group of students who qualify, the best and most equitable option for them. So I just want to ensure that we think about that as you hear feedback on AVID, that there are reasons for that program being added and having so many students in that program, in particular at T-Winkle. Things you probably already knew, but maybe our public may not be aware of, you know, we have some rules in California, and so we have some instructional minute guidelines. These are the minimum requirements. We are proud to say that we have more minutes than are required, so that's great. So anytime we're flexing classes or we're assigning classes or looking at schedules, we have to keep that in mind. And then we're going to take a look for just a moment at what our schools actually offer. Okay, so at this point, I'm actually going to call up Dr. Shaka and have him walk us through this slide, so I can share, I can share the mic tonight?
Do you mind if we take a little break just to ask you some questions?
Oh, sure. Don't go anywhere because you might have to answer them.
And I think that's great because, yeah, and then additionally, those additional materials that were requested by trustees, I think the frustrating thing about the Brown Act is we have to do, it's hard to do a lot of collaborative research beforehand. We have to get all of our information. Would we be able to share this information that a lot of us have requested with the public as part of this online?
Dr. Smith?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. And I did mention that was the collective over the last maybe 24 to 48 hours of information that came in from our trustees. And so if there's anything else that comes out of this meeting that is requested, we would add that as well.
Thank you so much. Yeah, it's frustrating to have a directive as a board or a vision as a board, and you can only kind of get the information and then work, you know, on the fly. So I really appreciate sharing that.
President Barto.
I see some questions. Trustee Crane?
I just had a point of clarification. Is this all going to be available on our website? And is, as far as this folder or this presentation?
Absolutely. We can make it available in multiple formats.
Yeah, we can make it available in multiple formats.
I think that will serve the public very well to have that.
Thank you. Trustee, trustee Wygant?
I just wanted to say, thank you so much, Carrie, for putting this together. It's amazing, the work that was put together. And I just wanted to also talk about, you know, middle school and how it's just, you know, it's a wide range of possibilities for students. And I think that's what's so important we need to, you know, keep focus on is, what does that look like for our students coming from elementary to, to middle school? And I think one of your, the diagram that shows elementary, middle school, and high school, I think we also, as we're looking at this as a board, we need to make sure that we think about, hey, there's still those, those young kids as well, right? So they're still in that middle, we still need to incorporate some of those touchy-feely teacher connections that we have in elementary school in that middle school experience. And so I really liked that diagram where it does say that. And it was interesting on this research that says the teacher-student relationship is one of the most important things in middle school. I'm a daughter of a middle school teacher, and middle school went by slowly for me because she was there. However, it was great. She definitely led the way. But I could see that relationship with teacher and student and how you can have that struggling student and having that one connection with that one teacher just brings them forward and to school. So, you know, I definitely, you know, wanted to make sure that we keep those kinds of ties in there, whether it's, I mean, they used to call it homeroom, but it's SSR, those types of things where you have that one teacher that you can go to that's consistent throughout the year, that can look for you. And then I just wanted to say that, you know, the staff buy-in, I think we heard from our And then I just wanted to say that, you know, the staff buy-in, I think we heard from our teachers today, that it really makes a big difference how great that the staff is and in connecting that with our students and then connecting the staff that wants to make that big change and difference and these admins that are here that are just working so hard with our students. So I just wanted to say thank you for that. And, yeah, I mean, there wasn't really a lot of questions just yet. I'm sure we'll have questions going forward, but I just wanted to say thank you for putting it all together.
Trustee Matoye?
As a former middle school teacher, I just want to let it out there right now. I appreciate every middle school teacher that's out there, as well as all of our teachers, but middle school kids come different every day, just because, so you never know your class makeup, even if they're all in attendance. So, but if you are that kind of person, that's what you love about it. So I know that every teacher, whether they be teaching English or music, they're connecting with their students. So that was there. But, and I wanted to just say for Avid, I don't want anyone to think that the board thinks Avid is bad, because Avid is fabulous. But Avid shouldn't take away the chance for a student to enjoy art or foreign language or some other, and I don't want to say fun, but passionate program that they may or may not know they even have, with the total focus on getting them academically ready for college. Because as someone who attends many, many college award ceremonies, children go to college because of athletic scholarships, arts scholarships, robotics scholarships, all of these opportunities are what help them be prepared for not only college, but life. Because we want our students that are leaving school, going into the military, leaving school and getting a job, to be able to respond and quickly take care of it. I've always said, I want a smart electrician, thank you very much. I don't want a plumber that doesn't know what they're doing. So no matter what career we have, we, all of these, all of these core subjects are preparing our children for whatever they do, and that's what we want to give them. But we think Avid is great. We just don't think Avid should be the absorption, a child shouldn't have to choose this fabulous pathway to go to college at the detriment of now giving up their music that they've done for five years in elementary school and hope that they can get into the same level of bands when they go to high school. So that's basically, I'm done.
And that's what today is for, is to be able to share those thoughts, gather information to determine what we look at and what decisions are made after this.
I have comments from trustee, or soylu, and trustee Anderson, which one? Oh, and then trustee Crane, so you pressed your button first.
Mine kind of follows what trustee Matoye was talking about. I think one of the things, I don't really necessarily have a question so much as a comment, that it concerns me a bit if Avid Excel folks, students are compelled to attend, and it's used as ELD, so they may not have any option to have an elective. And on page six, you know, we're talking about strategies and considerations, all of these that essentially are creating whole-child health, self-determination, which is what Avid is about. You know, if a child isn't able to make those choices for themselves, that to me is really concerning. And then I know we're going to be talking about the curriculum piece a little bit, but just kind of following the alignment, one of the concerns that I've heard from a lot of parents in my area have been the lack of Spanish for Spanish speakers at the middle school level, and we don't actually have that articulation from Whittier, if they're doing dual immersion, to Ensign. There is no Spanish for Spanish speakers at Ensign. There's no Spanish for Spanish speakers at T-Winkle. Those are hugely problematic for me. I think it's awesome that we have it at Mesa, go Mesa. But, you know, if we have a program at Whittier and we don't have it going on at Ensign, to me, that's a huge disservice to our students. So I just, I know we're going to talk about that more, but that to me, I'm concerned, and I think we've talked about it at times in the past. We've talked about ELD overall, you know, maybe two years ago, but I'm concerned that those things still are not in place. So when the sixth graders left Whittier last year, you know, I think this is the first year they're going to have a graduating class of sixth graders, but are those plans in place? I have not heard about them. So I just want to make sure that we're involving those, and that's part of the reason we wanted to have the study session. So thank you.
Thank you. Trustee, or soylu.
Sure. Thank you so much for doing this. I really appreciate all the work and thoughtfulness that all the staff has put into this. As the person representing T-Winkle District, I hear about this all the time, so I'm so excited that we're having this discussion. I have a couple of questions on the PowerPoint itself on page seven, slide seven. The two items that have the asterisks, are those have asterisks because that's where we're going to focus our attention, or were those identified as the most critical practices?
Those two apply directly to the work of evaluating the course offerings and the modification and/or changes to any of our course offerings.
Okay. So has it been determined that our instruction is somehow subpar? Why is the attention on improving instruction, like overall?
It hasn't been determined that it's subpar. It's just when you're looking at, you're looking at course of study, looking at what you offer, and if you look at what the outcomes are that we're trying to achieve, that's an important piece for us to look at. I don't think that it's something that we'd forego, looking at all the collective. There's lots of things we need to look at, but when you look at the research, what does it tell us to pay attention to? Those are two of the key areas.
Okay, so those two are more critical to our district than school climate or the leadership and collaboration?
Yes.
Got it. Then, let's see. The other one was on page 10, slide 10. What is meant by, because I'm just, I'm not in the education field, time on task versus direct instruction? What do those each mean exactly?
Great question. So direct instruction is what I'm doing to you now, which is standing in front of you and speaking to you. We defer, we refer to that as sage on the stage every now and then. It's when a teacher is delivering the instruction directly to the students. And so there have been instructional models that have changed the minutes in a 50-minute period, 20 minutes of direct instruction, only 10, turn it over to the class. So you look at direct instruction as that. And then time on task is when you look at, some people call it bell-to-bell, but when you look at a 50-minute block of period and you walk into a classroom, how many minutes is a teacher actually teaching or using towards their teaching of those 50 minutes? And so we really focus and that's the principal leadership piece. Trustee, or soylu, and why that's important is because we have to ensure that our teachers are maximizing their instructional minutes with their students. So the research says that the more time that you are actually having students work and time on task, doing what you're asking them to do and teacher teaching, the more growth you're going to get and student achievement you're going to see, versus me as a teacher maybe turning my class over to themselves within the first five to 10 minutes. And so our principal teams through instructional walks and things like that, that's what they're actually looking for to ensure that there's multiple levels of instruction going on and that we're using our time wisely.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Just a quick follow-up, just so I, clarity for that exact point. So this is a teacher-focused, this slide is a teacher-focused slide.
Slide 10. It's talking about what the teacher and the instructional focus, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sure. So then I think I also just want to lastly weigh in, I know it's been talked about a lot, and today's probably not going to solve it, but the Avid question, I had similar concerns that were already raised about Avid, and I just want to make sure that we're looking at the data, like, for instance, I'd love to know the data, what does it show in terms of college readiness for those who have had Avid in middle school versus only in high school? Is it substantially, you know, making their life better later on or not? Those kind of data points that show Avid's utility, I would like to see, because some folks in the education field that I've talked to about this have mentioned, you know, perhaps rather than taking time away from things that, as some of the parents said, could excite the student in middle school and get them excited about art or language or whatever, maybe that time is best spent, you know, pursuing those things. And then Avid being sort of a general thematic integration in the classroom, similar to what Gate has turned into, you know, we all know that Gate no longer really is Gate. It's, there are gate strategies that someone can or can't employ in a classroom. So maybe there are Avid strategies and employing those and executing those in middle school might be, you know, another opportunity to broaden the schedule to give the kids more choice that might excite them, just throwing that out there.
No, thank you, trustee soylu. And I would like to suggest, Dr. Smith, that we actually do a collection of data that's been requested through some of the comments that I've heard, to be able to provide back to the board, the outcome data that we have, the persistence data with Avid, to make sure that everybody's well informed about what the program offers and what our own local NUSD data shows, so we can come back at another time and provide that. I had written myself a note as I was listening to you all.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, I think it's important for us to say this for everybody here and all those viewers glued to their computer screens, that this is one step in a process. It's an important step. It's an exciting step. I think when you listen to the energy in the room with the parents, the folks that are here on the staff, our labor allies, our trustees leaning into this, it's exciting. We have to do more work. So anything that comes up like this, I think absolutely we need to provide that data, and let's provide it for those parents who are interested as well. And to continue to do this until we get to that resolution that meets the needs of all students. So absolutely, that's a commitment.
Thank you.
Trustee Crane?
Yeah, thank you. Dr. Torres, can you go to, go turn to like slide nine if possible, so that it's a visual aid? Thank you. So on that, on that page, I love the fact that it points out, points to a lot of the pieces of the wheel, you know? My question is, do we need to put in there contractual obligations? As an organization, we have limits, some limitations. Is that also part of that page, or would you put it later in the presentation?
I do have it later, so you're stealing my thunder, but that's okay. We do have a slide on process, and at that time, if it doesn't answer or address your questions, we can go ahead and ask more about that, but we do have a slide later in the presentation that talks about process.
So you think it's more appropriate there?
Probably makes, for context, yes.
Okay, great.
Because we're going to evaluate, we're going to just go through very quickly and share with you schedules and what current offerings are, and then we can talk about process if that works for you.
Yeah.
You know, even though it fits well where you have it, I think your recognition is trying to make sure that everyone's aware that we work in a system, and that system includes our labor allies, we've mentioned. And there's work that has to be done there as well, so.
Absolutely.
Trustee Crane, thanks for bringing that up. There is that point on the slide though later on where you talk about it.
And I just want to thank you for letting us do, breaking it up for our questions because it is a long presentation, not, I shouldn't have said it that way.
It's okay.
It's a very in-depth presentation, and if we, if we go too long, what our questions are, become muddled and meaningless. So this is really good. Thank you so much.
In teacher language, 10 and 2, 10 and 2.
10 and 2, 10 and 2, I know. And you guys, you know, you had a lot of questions, so we wanted to make sure we brought as much information to you as possible. We're at the midway point, so that's good news. We're at slide 15. So, Dr. Shaka, don't talk too long.
And I just wanted to say thank you so much, Carrie. This has been really, really great to look at. As I've got two Ensign students, and I just, I see two things with Avid. I see actually a lot of parents using it as a study skills class, not so much as a pathway to college. A lot of them are profess, like, working professionals with advanced degrees, and they love Avid for their students because it helps, it's a way of providing study skills. So I love that idea of tacking it into a strategies as part of that. But also, I just wanted to compliment the middle school staff on what an excellent job they're doing with mental health supports, with all that we've been through. I hear really wonderful things. I see it in my own students' lives, but I hear really wonderful things from parents with what has been done for the kids in the mental health area. So thank you.
Well, good afternoon, President Bartow, members of the board, Dr. Smith. Thanks for having me. I will be brief. I just wanted to share a couple of slides with all of you to provide a little bit of context. And kind of the theme of the next couple of slides is the idea of trade-off. And so what we have up on the screen in the presentation is the current number of minutes of each class, the current number of times each class meets per year, the number of classes taken in middle school, the total amount of minutes per year each student spends in a single class, and then finally, the percentage of their day that they have in the core. So if you look at the chart up here, what you're going to see is going from left to right, you have T-Winkle that meets six, that takes six classes, a student takes six classes. Each class is 53 minutes, is the general schedule, so I know there's modified schedules here and there, but traditionally, they have 53-minute classes. And a student will spend 9,180 minutes in a single class per year. And this is important to know because, again, this idea of trade-off and the idea of a school day being a whole pie, and we can slice that pie up however we choose, but at the end of the day, it's still the same size, and however we slice it up, it's going to take from one area to give to another. And so in the example of T-Winkle, you have a class, for example, math, a student will spend 9,180 minutes in mathematics in a year. And as we shift over to Ensign, that goes down, and then Costa Mesa and CDM, who are both in the block, it goes down a little bit more. So you can see that trade-off in the core classes as we shift to more electives. The biggest difference that you're going to see here is the students at Costa Mesa and CDM Middle School all take eight classes. So traditionally, all students take math, English, science, history, and PE. And then at Ensign and T-Winkle, there are six classes in elective. And at Costa Mesa and CDM, they have two additional elective spots, which is what we're talking about today, the opportunity to take more electives within the school day. But again, as you can see, those minutes come from somewhere, so those minutes cut into the class. You also have number of class meetings per year. So you have at Ensign and T-Winkle, 180 class minutes. The students will see all of their teachers every day. And when you shift over to the block schedule, they're going to see their teachers 108 times throughout the year. So you have less daily contacts with your teacher approximately every other day as opposed to every day. And then finally, at the bottom, you see the amount of your day you're spending in core, so 67% at Ensign and T-Winkle, and 50% of your day is spent in the core at CDM and Costa Mesa. So we just wanted to share this comparison because sometimes, sometimes it's nice to see the actual numbers and what this actually means. So the big question that we ask is, well, does the reduction of minutes in a particular class have an impact on student learning and student performance? And the short answer is, it does. As you can see, we have amazing teachers at all four of our middle schools. There's absolutely no doubt about that. But when you see the test scores that we have from the Smarter Balance, which is a pure cohort data, this is our 2019 eighth-grade cohort, you also have in your packets the 2017 eighth-grade cohort and the 2016 eighth-grade cohort. What we're showing here is typical, and so you don't see a deviation in the results significantly in terms of how the students are achieving in both math and English as measured on the Smarter Balance assessment. So what you're seeing here is that reduction of minutes in a class has impact on student proficiency scores for our students, again, going back to this idea of trade-off. It's fantastic to offer students as many opportunities as possible for electives, but that does come at a cost of instructional minutes. And so looking at this chart right here, you have a sixth-grade cohort in 2017, the beginning cohort score, let's use T-Winkle as the example, coming into seventh grade was 29% of the students met or exceeded standard. And by the time that same cohort left T-Winkle, 34% of the students met or exceeded standards, so there was a value added of approximately 5%. Again, a comparable amount of minutes to what they were seeing in elementary on a daily contact. And then you go down to English, same thing. You can look at any of the scores right there. You're going to see the value added or reduction. And again, this is a direct correlation to the number of minutes that students spend in core. So we just wanted to highlight this information to make sure that we understood the opportunity cost of shifting to various models.
And I'd also like to invite Dr. Gogol up just to have some anecdotal conversations just regarding this kind of outcome data and then kind of the SCL component of this as well.
Good afternoon, President Bartow, welcome. And good afternoon to our board members and to Dr. Smith and our honored guests. It's an honor to be able to comment on some of the data. First, I'd like to point out that this is two years into our block schedule. So when you're looking at the eighth-grade cohort, these students were in the block schedule for the first two years of our block schedule cohort. And as mentioned prior, we have a limited number of instructional minutes, right, from eight to three approximately, 755 to three in our case. And so when you divide up that pie into different areas, you are going to have a loss of instructional minutes in the core. And so you can see that there is a direct impact on our Smarter Balance assessment data based on that impact. One would think, and I have an eighth-grade daughter, I'm living the dream with her in the block schedule. the block schedule. So I get to be mom and I get to be the administrator that gets to watch over all of my other kiddos. One would assume that a greater opportunity in the elective offering, offerings would lead to a more well-balanced, less anxious, lower-stressed student. That would be my assumption as a former counselor. And my beginning career was a music teacher, so you can imagine how attached I am to elective courses. However, what I have noticed is that over time, when you look at a student who's 11, who goes from interfacing with one teacher every day, all day, in sort of like a family mode, and might have a pullout for science or for music, pre-COVID. And then you introduce that student to eight different personalities. And, and not only eight different personalities, but teachers they only see every single, every other day instead of every day. What you will notice is the stress level rising, the anxiety rising a bit. And those electives do come with outside time as well. So there's a, there's a thought that if you take, for example, a world language, that it's not going to add to your outside of the class time workload, but it does. So you also have to factor in the amount of, the amount of outside of the school day, eight to three, time that you're adding to the student as well. So I have anecdotally observed that it has not lowered the stress level for my students. In fact, my kiddos are taking eight classes, four 90-minute blocks a day. And if you asked any of us to sit for four 90-minute sessions, I think we'd be pretty tired, right? The two to three o'clock timeframe would be pretty tough. And so I, it is a trade-off. It's not that, I don't believe that an op, extra opportunities for kids is not of benefit, but it's a balance. And it's, it's a trade-off from taking minutes away from the core and putting them into other activities. And it's also balance and understanding the, the developing frontal lobe of an 11-year-old, which is really Swiss cheese, right? So to ask them to interact with eight different personalities every other day and to not have that consistency of everyday, every single day contact with a caring adult has been a challenge for the middle school students. So it's just one more thing to be considered as you look at the balance. Is there anything else that you wanted me to share?
That's great. Thank you. We're still glad to have Becky back, by the way, so. And we'll talk more about balance and, and share that, but I just thought it was important so that you could see just in terms of these choices that we get to make, it's that trade-off, right?
Trustee Ursaylu had a question.
Yeah, thank you so much. Just a couple clarifying questions for Dr. Shaka. I know it was your slide, so I don't want to put Dr. Torres on the spot. The, the one with the, yes. Is it, because I don't want to do the wrong math. I'm trying to figure out how these numbers correlate to the 54,000 required instructional minutes. Is it safe to multiply six times 9,180? Is that, is that the way?
Yeah, that's a ballpark. Again, we haven't, what's not included in there is all of the assembly schedules, so there might be a, a small discrepancy, but you'll get, you'll get a ballpark.
Okay, because when I did that, it looks like, for instance, if the instructional minutes required by this date is 54,000 as the target goal, when you do that math for those rows, then T-Winkle gets 55,080 minutes and Costa Mesa gets 66,240, CDM gets 61,920. So just fundamentally more minutes of learning? Am I understanding that correctly or not?
There's some pieces missing, I believe, for that, yeah. And I do have the note, I have notes on our, because our contract language also speaks to minimum minutes within certain grade spans that all schools have to have. And it is definitely more than the 55,000. So we can get that for you. This is to show you a sample of just one day and what it could look like, but those other schedules that we have, that every school has that are different than the traditional day, will play into that number.
Thank you. Yeah, because I'm trying to figure out for the four schools, where do they fall along that 54,000 required minutes? Are they all pretty equal or, or not? And then the other, so going to the, the slide 16 on the achievement data?
Yeah.
So, I mean, those of you that are statisticians out here, correlation doesn't equal causation. So given that we're all aware of that, what are the other items that you think are leading to these declines for CDM and Mesa that you're not seeing at Ensign and T-Winkle over time? You're not seeing them decline? Is it simply that, because at a first glance, I would think, well, that's because CDM started at 86% of their sixth graders being proficient, there's really nowhere to go but down. But then T-Winkle starts with 39%, really nowhere to go but up. So I'm just trying to figure out, what are the other elements that are leading to those final column percentage shifts that may or may not be due to strictly the calendar and the six versus eight classes?
And yeah, no data set, you're absolutely right, is, you know, causation is not always there. We have to look at all the different pieces of information. And so that's something that typically our leadership team does when they dive into their data, data chats with the team, to look deeply about what their instructional program was for that year, any type of specific teaching and learning opportunities that occurred within that calendar year that could have led to growth or best, which we also talk about best practices. So one of the most effective parts of a PLC is when principals come together. In this case, talking about district-wide data or middle school data for, for our conversation today, is to come together and say, how did you increase your scores? What were your math teachers doing? You know, and so that's a conversation that we have at that level. No one data set is the responsibility of one thing, I think with the exception of 2020 COVID, you know, that's a, we get to throw that one right out of the water. But everything else has multiple factors. But one of the things we do recognize, at least, again, we'd have to do our own research study, but anecdotally, we have heard from our eight-period day leadership over time that the kids do fatigue in a different way that is not represented at the other six-period sites. So we'd have to do more data digging for that to, to come back and get, capture their notes from 2019 and this cohort to determine what they think may have contributed to that.
Yeah, yeah, because it is fascinating for CDM especially and Mesa to see why these large drops. I mean, we should want to understand that. And I don't know that, you know, them having a wide variety of fun additional electives would be the sole source driving that. It's definitely a factor probably, but I'm just-
Yeah. It's good for thought.
I would also be, because, I mean, there was a period of time where we had sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, our middle schools were more combined, but they're not like that anymore. So the differences to me seem really evident because the sixth, like, those are, those are students who are going to Harborview and East Bluff. The sixth grade cohorts are the ele, from the elementary sites in those zones. So I think I'm, I'm interested to see how we can address those as well, because I just don't know that we're necessarily preparing some of the kids enough for them to get to middle school and do well.
Well, that's the good thing about data is it gives us a lot to talk about, for sure.
And my one comment was, while I totally agree that there is a single teacher in an elementary school situation that children see every day, they see usually three or four teachers every day because they have a different teacher for science and they have lab science, they have a different teacher for PE, they have a different teacher for music. And usually in the sixth grade, everyone that I've, my children have either gone to or I've worked in, the upper grades, fifth and sixth, or just sixth, they will switch classes to help students get ready for middle school. So you have the teacher that's okay with math, teaching math, and the other teacher that's okay teaching it, reading essays, doing the language arts and social studies. So it's not total culture shock having different teachers every day. The format is different. Picking your stuff up and moving is different. But it's not as, it's not as, like Little Red Schoolhouse and then going to Harvard. So it's not that comparison. Thank you.
One thing I would love to see is the sixth grade data all the way through at least ninth or 10th. I remember from looking at previous study session data that seventh and eighth is kind of, it's, it's an anomaly. It's, you look at the sixth grade data and then the ninth grade data, from what I've seen in previous years, tracks a lot more along the lines of the sixth grade data. Just something I remember from a few years past. So I'm not sure if it's, again, that frontal lobe development that's happening in the seventh and eighth grade. If you asked at my house, I would say that that's what's going on. But, but I do, I do, would love to see a longer trend because I feel like, based on previous years, when you put the sixth grade data, seventh, and then the high school, it, it didn't track in a straight line like you'd expect.
No, it, it doesn't. And the instruction changes, shifts dramatically in middle school and then it shifts again in high school. But we can go ahead and prepare something for the board and provide that to you.
Thank you.
Okay, and these are pretty easy to see. And so we're going to, I don't want to say breeze through these, but I just want to highlight this for just a moment. And so this is pretty simple in terms of a numerical calculation of offerings. And so you can see that there with Costa Mesa at 27, T-Winkle at 13, Ensign and CDM at about 21. These are the course offerings. So some of our, our feedback we received was to, you know, hey, what do we offer at each school? So that's what you're going to see in the next four slides. And I have two numbers on this slide, and the reason is, is that our seven through 12 programs have different groups of students. So we have 576 middle grade students, and then you have 1173 total. You add that together is actually how we arrive at our master's schedules at the seven through 12 programs.
1173 total what? Courses?
High school. These are students.
The total bodies in the school. Got it. Thank you so much.
So you have 576, 1173, that gives you a total. And when we build master schedules for our master schedulers, we look at student enrollment, a few other, a few other, a few other things that contribute to that. But when you're looking at someone's scheduling, a school schedule, excuse me, you need to make sure you're thinking that in your mind, is that they are, have a larger population and therefore they have more teachers, which gives flexibility. Same thing with Corona Del Mar, you have this variety of offerings for our students, but again, you're looking at a larger group of students. And then you have T-Winkle that only has 537 students, so they're a standalone school. And so they have 13-ish electives, and that's based on some of those numerical formulas that we have. There's lots of factors that go into creating a schedule, but that's just a baseline idea for you to consider as you're thinking about how we arrive at scheduling. And then we have Ensign at about 975 students. These numbers were as of about a week or so ago, and that kind of gives you the background on just the numbers. Do we have a question about that?
Yeah, it's just a quick question. Do we know the capacity of those four schools? Like how many they could potentially fit? Because a lot of the parents have kept mentioning that T-Winkle's enrollment is very small, but what could it be? And what are the other, how small is it? Like declining versus the other four, the other three?
Thank you. Yes, and in your, in your books, in the very back in the sleeve, because that was a late addition, and we are still collecting better data on that, but there is a loading capacity sheet in the very back.
Thank you.
But I want to, we'll probably give you another one that looks a little better than that, but we were trying to put that together. And so there is some room for growth. It is not as, facilities will give us a calculation and say, you have X amount of rooms divided by this equals how many students you can educate in a building. The best way to come up with loading capacity is actually to walk the site with the principal, say, this is where my music teacher goes, this is where we do intervention, this is, you know? And so while we have buildings that have X amount of classrooms with this number of students, we do flex some of those spaces. And so one of the things we have done with facilities this year is walked with the principals and said, you know, what do we have, what's our free space, or what we call open space? And what can we do and where can we go?
Because if you ask a principal, there is no open space ever.
Correct. We, we say that every time. Oh, there's no, no, I'm sorry. In fact, can you drop a building right here? And that's, that's very typical, so we have to flex our principals' brains and let them know they have to think a little creatively sometimes.
Just saying.
It's just the way it is. But we will provide additional ongoing information regarding the loading capacity by site.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then I just want to acknowledge our stakeholders. We really do appreciate the feedback and the interest, and we have heard from parents about providing more elective choices for students at T-Winkle. So as you have heard a lot today and you received, as you've stated, a lot of information, you know, we do want to evaluate our, our instructional programs and where we can provide more or different. Our board and trustees, since I think the day I took the job, messaged me and said, hey, we really want to look at increased access, can you take a look at this? So it's been something that our trustees collectively have been interested in. And then our staffs at our schools, as I've just had a chance to get to know people and visit all of the seven through 12 campuses, they've been open to talking about new and different and offerings. And so that's very, very encouraging that we have a group of educational leaders who are open to talking about what's great for kids. And so I'm encouraged by that. That's exciting, actually, when you go onto a campus and people pull you over and say, have you ever thought about, can we, you know, how about, can you open your checkbook? Things like that. Anyhow, and then, you know, as you're reflecting today, and again, this is, you know, we're not, we're leaving here with lots of information, but as you're, you're reflecting on what could be done, we're just providing some examples of schedules for you to sleep on, things for you to think about and know about, about, and I've heard this comment before about, you know, well, how do other places do it? Or a parent commented on, a community member, excuse me, commented on, you know, other Orange County schools, maybe look outside. And there are lots of different models, you know? And so we're always open to, to just evaluating that. It's, it's not necessarily that we're going to go act on it, it's just evaluate, think, sleep on it, things for us to consider. So on this slide, you can take a look at that and see the different options. There's many more. I could go on and on and on, because throughout the United States, there's all different kinds of models.
Can I ask one question about that, about the four models? Because it sounds like these might be the four sort of most, most common models? Would that be fair?
I think that's a fair statement in Orange County. I'll, I'll agree with that.
Okay. I'm curious nationwide or statewide, what the data shows in terms of, has there been research that shows the effectiveness of the six traditional period versus a block schedule for middle schools? I know Dartmouth had some research that was on high schools and blocks, but I haven't seen anything. So I'm curious, is there some researcher out there who focuses on middle schools and the ultimate system design for middle schoolers?
There isn't a lead researcher that I have come across yet, and by no means I'm not an expert, but in my looking for information, there's not one person who's specifically talking about middle schools. There is quite a bit of research right now on turnaround middle schools. What was the name of that book in 1984?
Caught in the Middle?
Caught in the Middle. So kind of out of the sea? Thank you. So if you go back to, if you go back to that timeframe in history, there was a big movement to improve middle schools at that time. Caught in the Middle was a big publication that came out. It was, it was all the rage back then. And now we're seeing turnaround middle school research, and so you are seeing people look at, how do you turn around a middle school and what does it take? And if you go back to those initial slides that I shared, those are the factors we need to consider are that engagement piece, the relevancy of coursework, the alignment, and then just ensuring that we're, we're focusing on that deep instructional program. So how we arrive at it, whether it's a block or not, is, is not necessarily where we've seen the research locally. It's really about the program itself and then how do we feel it's best to be delivered? You can do a search and you will find many dissertations on block schedules and the impact of them and, you know, the wins and the gains and the losses. So there's lots to read, but there's not like right now currently that I've come across a leading researcher.
Thank you. And just a gentle reminder for, I'm watching that, I'm just as guilty as you, but if you could remember to press the button so that I can call on you. I know we all get enthusiastic and I'm really excited. But no worries.
And then we always want to know what our neighbors do, because that's just who we are in education. We did that a lot during COVID. We call everybody every day, what are you doing? How are you doing? And so just three samples. We have 27 districts in Orange County that are, that, you know, have different schedules. And some of those districts are obviously elementary, some are K-8 and some are high school only and K-12s. But I picked our three neighbors. These are samples. These are not, you know, this is not an exhaustive list of their daily schedules for each 180 days. But Irvine does have all their middle schools on a seven-period block. Tustin has the seven-period block. And Capo has the six-period block right now. These were given to me by their, my job alikes in their school districts. And so they, whether or not they're going to change next year, do something different, I'm not sure, but these are what our sister districts do near to us. But these are what our sister districts do near to us. So that is always important for us just to kind of know what's out there. You may remember when districts went through No Child Left Behind. That's another moment in time. And we had to do program improvement, or if you were a program improvement school and you had a certain group of students that were far below basic, you had to give the intervention blocks for math and English. It was a mandate. And so many schools at that time in our local neighborhoods went to the seven-period day because of that. So you'll see a lot of schools in Anaheim, in Santa Ana, Orange Unified, Placentia or Belinda, some of the larger K-12s had to go to that model for that reason, and they never left it. So that's just another important piece is like, why did everybody move in that district a long time ago? Some of us were forced to do that.
Trustee Anderson had a question.
Thank you. Have you heard from, in some of those conversations, what they will be doing with the new legislation about late start?
Yes. And many of them have already moved. And so they are going just to bump the time. So remember, middle schools don't have to go to 8:30. They can stay at eight. So only right now, the districts that we've worked with are going, only for the high schools going to 8:30.
Okay.
Trustee Wigan had a question.
Yeah. What, when did Mesa and CDM move to their middle schools to block schedule? Because I think.
That's an excellent question. And because I've only been here seven months, I'm going to look around.
I, I.
Sure.
Mesa went, Mesa did the deciding 2013, 14, and the first year was 2014, 15, right? Okay.
2014, 15 was the vote.
15, 16 was the implementation year. And I believe if CDM wasn't at the exact same time, they were the following year.
CDM was earlier.
16, 17 for CDM.
Right. They, it was, it was Mesa then CDM. But CDM had been on block, went back to sixth day, and then went on block again because we were all, all of our high schools were on block at that point.
Trustee Wigan, did you have additional questions?
Maybe later.
Okay.
And Trustee Joy also had her hand up, but.
The Tustin Unified schedule didn't look like a block. It looked like a seven-period day.
It is. It is, but they rotate, so they have an A-B. So it's probably maybe not the best graphic for it.
Okay.
But yes.
So that, that may be their day that they do everything. Got it. Okay. Thank you.
And there's, like I said, there's lots of, lots of schedules to, to, you know, take a look at. We have lots of partners out there who are doing lots of different things. This is just a quick sample. You've already seen.
Carrie, before you move past that, my understanding is, correct me where I'm wrong. Tustin's moving to, all of them have the same design. Irvine doesn't have that. And as you look around Orange County districts, some have all, one, you know, system for all. Others do it differently depending upon the school and the programs. I think that's important to note if that's true.
That is true. We do have some districts who unilaterally have all their schools on the same schedule. All middle schools on the same schedule. Yes. Just like they have some that have all elementary schools on a very tight schedule in different, and what they, they don't use zones per se, but in their, whatever they call that, they do have them calibrated. And that's important. And sometimes that's an operational component because with resources, transportation and other things that operationally it makes sense many times to have a block of schools on the same schedules. So again, we'd have to dig into that to find out how people arrived at their decisions. But that's not unusual. And then we've seen something similar, but this is just our schedules here. And again, you have those in your folder. And so this is what Trustee Crane had mentioned earlier today. And, and so I just want to highlight too, that as you leave here today, you're going to have all this information that you're thinking about and, you know, factors to consider as we look at our instructional program. And that's something that every solid district does, you know, is we look and evaluate every year at the work that we're doing anyways. And again, I commented, I'm pleased to have the Directors of Teaching and Learning on board in both elementary and secondary to help with this work, to really talk with our leadership, to say, are we on the right track? Are there any shifts we need to make to be, add any new courses? We do that a lot at high school. High schools are notorious for coming forward and bringing things because the need changes rapidly. We need to address that and, and be fluid. And so now we're taking that kind of a concept to our seven through 12 program. So what do we consider when we make changes?
I'm sorry, really quick, Trustee Yelsey had a question.
I'm sorry.
Thanks. It was, it was a while ago, but to go back to the other districts, do any of them have comprehensive middle school, high schools on the same campus?
I do not believe the ones that I showed do.
Because that is an issue with our schools that do that.
We are very unique.
So it's another consideration for that.
We're special.
Yeah. Thank you. Yeah. So that leads to change and process. And so just what do we have to consider? To Trustee Crane's comment earlier this evening was, you know, we have regulations and codes. You commented on the legislation for later start, which is SB 328. Those are things that drive us. We have to pay attention to ed code, legislation, things like that. We pay attention to the California dashboard, meaning our student achievement data can't, you know, can't be lost on us. Students and staff input, so that's an important piece to us as we make changes. For example, I have been sitting in on the CTE pathway meetings at, at our seven through 12 programs. I've had a chance to sit in about five of those meetings and what's the conversation? What do students need? What are the changes we need to make? What are the kids telling us? What are the principals bringing forward as interests for their school? Those are the kind of conversations that have to happen. And then course development and approval. That's something that is really important. As we look at a seven through 12 program, we want to make sure that our coursework is aligned and sequential and grows with each year, especially if we have those connection points. So to your point, Trustee Anderson, about language and native language coursework, you know, how do we create those different tracks for students based upon their competency levels? And as they emerge from these dual immersion programs? And I do want to share that Ensign will be the, will be launching their dual immersion seventh grade class that's coming up, that is in the works. We have been working with Samantha Payne and her team since probably October on this. And we're thrilled to be able to say, the books are in. So that's good news. They were delivered. So that's happening. And so these things are starting to roll up, which is really wonderful once you see it get all the way through the program. So that's exciting. And then we don't do.
Great news. Thank you.
Yes. And we don't do anything in isolation. You know, it takes all of us together to be able to do this. And I say this, meaning anything, whether it's a new course and we want to teach something really crazy at the high school and we need a new teacher and how are they going to be assigned to removing something that could, you know, is antiquated and isn't bringing value to the educational program. It's a partnership. It's collaborative. And it requires everybody to talk about these items and issues and thoughts and ideas. And so you'll see that I have collaboration with labor partners on the bottom there because that's really important to us. It is a complete partnership and we do not work in isolation from each other. And so that's not lost on us. And we heard our labor partners make public comments tonight. And so obviously they're equally as invested as we are in knowing, knowing what is going on.
Oh, before we go to the next slide, Trustee Anderson had a question.
Thank you. Related to course development and approval, I know one of the reasons we really wanted to have this no later than January was to hopefully be able to make some of these changes potentially for Te Winkle specifically for fall. What does that timeline possibly look like? Like what is our end date of having, you know, a discussion and approval possibly from our associations and unions and having the development of coursework? Like is there, you know, that has to be done by April 15th or it can't go on? Or is there kind of some guidelines to that?
So thank you for your question, Trustee Anderson. And tonight is about providing information to this board to provide us a level of interest and direction that can emerge from tonight. And so I think once we hear that from the group, then Dr. Smith can direct staff to start taking on that, to, to take on that information and work through that process.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm curious though, with, with your question, if we had any insights on timelines for content development. You know, certainly we have to engage in conversations with our allies. So it, do we have any timelines for those processes? I would, I would ask HR or other folks as far as content creation.
So for content, I can comment on content. So the good news is if we pick up a class and we borrow it from CDM or Costa Mesa or Ensign, guess what? We don't have to write it. We have it. And so we're borrowing it and we'd apply it. So in terms of development, of course, with, you know, I would say putting pen to paper, that wouldn't necessarily be a factor. I would work with Dr. Shaka to be able to move those forward and bring those for your, your board acknowledgement because they're already approved. So it's really about just making sure you're aware that these are going to happen. We would need to work with our school sites to determine whether or not, you know, what are we going to do? What are the possibilities? And I think that's important for us to think about tonight is possibilities. You know, I don't think anybody's ready to act tonight. It's more about what are those possibilities and opportunities that lie ahead? And we can determine what those next steps are. I think what you can be confident in is that we will continue to work on this and we will have, I think, some actionable next steps. But we don't have a timeline today. That was, that was definitely not something that we have worked out just yet.
Trustee Wigan and then Trustee Crane.
I just, this is a very important slide as I'm looking at it, where it says student and staff input. I think there's a, I think we need to, you do say parent survey there. I think we need to talk about student, parent, staff input because that's a very important part of this whole equation. And we have parents here in the audience that are very passionate about it. And, and just like I am too, as a parent in the district. And another thing is, as we talk about collaboration with labor partners, let's, I love to do things from the bottom up to make sure that we know what's going on in the classroom, to see exactly what these teachers think that they can do and what we can do with our middle schools. So really involving all of our teachers and administrators to really understand what is going on. And I know you will do that. But I just think that's a very important part of this process for change. And, and to me, as we look at timeline, and I don't want to go kind of going, stealing your thunder for the next part. But when you do talk about, you look at changes fully in 2024, I think that is a very thoughtful way to go about things because you, you can't make change if you don't know what you're doing, right? So you don't want to do something and then, you know, stumble and trip and have it go, oh, sorry, it didn't really feel good that year. We're going to go back to the next year. You want to do it thoughtfully. And it might be a little slower than maybe some people, but it's going to be better than what it would have been if we would have gone too fast. So I just want to say, you know, it's, it's great, good, thoughtful timeline and good thoughtful input that we're putting in on middle schools and electives. So thank you.
Trustee Crane and then Trustee Yelsey.
Well, we certainly do have our work cut out for us. So. I, I did want to piggyback off Trustee Wigan's comment because I had, I had put down, community, community, underline, underline. And I think, you know, that doesn't necessarily need a, a time like, we don't have to wait, right? So we can, as a, as a trustee board, start planning when we want to go out to the, to the, to the communities and get input, whether it's, you know, we can begin with a survey, online survey and, and town hall, actually showing up to the sites with the principals being, you know, the, the leader of when is a good time because they, they're in touch with their communities. Because maybe, you know, different sites have different time requests or whatever. But I, I do think that that could be a good start. And then that way we can at least have an idea of what is, what is a request, a need from the community. And of course, Dr. Smith, I was, you know, refers to the allies. That's also definitely a conversation. It'd be great to have the allies at those town halls or, so that they're also listening to the need of the community as well. You know, it's just like a group effort. It's going to need to be.
That's absolutely possibilities. And so when we talk about what's possible, starting to the conversations is, is totally doable. I've had the pleasure of going out and speaking with two staffs already and it's been delightful. People are open to the conversation. So we can do that.
Trustee Yelsey.
Thank you. I agree that we need to go out to the community and hear. And we've heard from a lot of parents of courses they'd like to have incorporated, their kids would like to have. But I think, and I don't want to put anything on these people, but we have four people sitting in the front row who are in touch, see what's happening in the classroom, see what the teachers are doing, see how the kids are receiving it. I'm sure they hear from parents and kids and students and teachers. And if they could add anything to this today while we're here to give their kind of input, what direction they would like to see us move. I know that's a loaded question with a lot, but.
I'll have them come up at the end in our closing slide. I would love to have them make a comment. Yes.
Thank you. That's great.
And these are just resources. So when you consider anything that we change, these are the things that we always talk about. So, you know, I'll call Jeff Trader and say, let's talk facilities. You know, we need to look at enrollment and how things are going. And then we always have to consider our staffing. So these are things that at education, we always have to keep in the back of our minds. And then of course, opportunities. And we are literally almost at the end. So I'm going to go ahead and call up our four distinguished leaders and have them make a comment on this. And then these are just opportunities and things we could do. So you were asking about next steps. I heard our trustee ask about, you know, where do we go from here? There's lots of ways. And I, I'm going to stick with number five, which is other, because it's undefined at this point. And, and that's important to us because we have a lot of things to consider as we move forward. But let's have our four middle school principals come up and, and make a comment.
Well, we've talked a lot about Te Winkle, so I think it would be appropriate for me to come up here. Thank you so much. I, I really appreciate all the input from our families, from the community. And I was really, really excited to have Carrie also come out and be able to talk to the staff because there is an interest, and there has been an interest to be able to expand opportunities for our kiddos. I do want to first acknowledge the fact that so many of our students, when we talk about Avid specifically, it's a program that's been at our school for 20 years. And it's a program that our families, parents now have kids that are going through the program. So it's a very special program at our school site. And it's something that our, our teachers have really taken a lot of pride in developing. So I do want to give a shout out to those teachers. But our teachers also do recognize that we want to be able to have opportunities for our kiddos to be able to thrive and have access to opportunities. And so when we went to having Cloud Campus, we, we never thought that COVID would happen. We actually had quite a few more offerings in Project Lead the Way that fed into Estancia High School. And unfortunately, at that time, one of the teachers that taught, four of those electives actually went to another school site. So the numbers that you see here are 13 electives. While that's not the ideal situation, it actually isn't reflective of what we had pre-COVID. And we have worked, I'm working closely with Lisa Snowden, obviously with Dr. Shaka, as well as Ms. Torres, to be able to restore some of those electives. But once again, there is a systematic way in which, and a process in which that has to occur to make sure that we're offering the teachers the appropriate professional development to be able to instruct our students in those areas. We also have taken efforts to provide after-school enrichment. So we added speech and debate. We're going to be starting that in the next couple of weeks. And we, we have also added our Spanish after-school program. And, and those are ways that we're slowly starting to incorporate enrichment opportunities for our students. But we're also looking to be able to bring those classes into the actual school day. There are some, some limitations with a six-period day and with a smaller school site. But what was really exciting is that when Ms. Torres came out to talk to our leadership team, our teachers are excited about opportunities. And we just want to make sure that we're involving everybody in the process and what courses are being offered. And then bringing our teachers along the way because they are important stakeholders in that process. And then obviously making sure that we involve our parents too, because they are, they're a critical stakeholder in, in our schools. So.
That's Te Winkle.
Good afternoon, good evening, President Bartow, board members, Dr. Smith, Executive Cabinet, everyone. Proud to be here. Thank you for the lovely presentation. Just want to add that at Costa Mesa, we're very proud of our core elective offerings. And from my conversations with students and staff, they, they enjoy what they do, what they take over there, whether it's from the arts, athletics that they can do after school, to the CTE courses, they, they enjoy it. We're always looking to add new courses as long as they're student interest. So if students come to me and, and give me an idea, I can present it to our, our middle school teachers, our high school teachers. And then we'll, we'll try to find a staff member who's willing to develop the course and to recruit kids to take the class. So we're, I think we're adding next year a, a computer science course in eighth grade and then also a music tech course that will, that will align with our high school music tech, music tech program. So always listening to our kids, listening to our staff and, and trying to provide them experiences and pathways and programs that best support them for their future, to get them college and career ready and ready for life.
I have a quick comment question.
Yeah.
I've had my number.
So do we want to take them now?
I'll wait.
I was, I see a lot of lights, but I was going to wait till everyone got to speak.
I'm happy. That's fine.
Good afternoon, President Bartow and the rest of the board and Dr. Smith and Executive Cabinet. And thank you for the presentation, Ms. Torres. Ms. Torres came out and spoke with our leadership team and we had a really, she came a couple of times. We had some very rich discussions. rich discussions. I'm impressed, being new to Ensen this year, with the plethora of elective options that exist, including new things coming in as we discuss the dual immersion program that will be entering our school next year. And we have a thriving Avid program with Avid Excel new this year too, along with all kinds of different arts electives and CTE pathway electives too. However, in our discussion with our leadership team on a couple of different occasions, we were able to really take a look at our students who are taking support classes, our students who are EL students or special ed students who just need other types of interventions and supports. And being on a six-period day does create the need for them to make a decision. Do you need the support class? Or are you going to take an elective class that might be of higher interest for a teenager? And so I am interested in a way in getting creative with solutions to try to meet those needs of our students. And there's just under 20% that do, that are in that situation. So I am very open, as is the Ensen staff, to exploring all sorts of options. Thank you.
Just to wrap up my middle school colleagues, I am super grateful for the team that I get to work with. They are brilliant educators. One of my favorite quotes is, there's nothing worse than an idea when it's the only one you have. So I am super grateful to be surrounded by the collective brilliance of not only the educational team at the district and our parents and in our community, but also the board as we're pressed to make better decisions for kids. Because at the end of the day, I'll do a 12-period day if it's best for kids. So whatever is best for kids is what I know all of us want. And so we look forward to exploring the additional options and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
And I know there were some lights, so there's some questions.
We'll start with trustee Matoye, then trustee Anderson, and then trustee Crane.
And it's good that I had time to think because I'm only down to one now. I just wanted to check with Dr. Quong. I know this is Mesa's, he could probably just wave, but this is Mesa's first year of reinstalling Avid back into our, is it in the middle school or is it only in the high school at this point?
Currently this year, we have seventh grade Avid, seventh grade Avid Excel and ninth grade Avid. And we're going to continue to add and build on that program where the kids will matriculate to the next grade level, then we'll bring in a new group, seventh grade. And so we'll be adding eighth grade and 10th grade next year. So.
So that would be added to what we already have. And then
Yeah.
For all intents and purposes, if a, if a child slash parent selects or is eligible to take enhanced math, that is in effect taking an elective also because they have to have their math every day. So that, that's also an elective. That's why the opportunity to have other electives is built in. Okay. Thank you.
And the, the benefit of the eight-period block schedule allows them the flexibility of adding additional electives to their coursework. So they can take a double block in math, enhanced math, and still have room for another elective.
Thank you very much. And it is.
Trustee Anderson.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I appreciate all the work that's been done on this. I know I've been really excited to have this conversation for a while. So thank you for the really robust information and data specifically. One of the parents brought up, and I've heard from several students that I've spoken with, that the student voice and choice is so important. And so I just want to make sure too, that like, as we are building these community events, that there is, yes, one space for parents to respond and contribute, but I think there needs to be maybe the students going first. I want to hear from the students first. The students often are left out of the equation. And I know for me to choose my electives in middle school was huge. And so I just, I want to make sure that we're centering the students in all of this first. I ran into a student at Trader Joe's last night and I asked her and she said, she's in sixth grade at Wilson and next year she wants to do art and digital art. And those both are pathways that, you know, she was like, one second. She, she knows classes that she wanted to take. So I just want to make sure that we're including them. And I also too, just want to maybe start having the conversation that with a lot of the, the state level things, you know, there's Global California 2030, bioliteracy and multilingualism is something that I think a lot of us value and consider an essential skill. And it's difficult when I continue to hear like children who need more intervention and need more help instead of, no, we have students who are learning a second language. We have second language learners. I just would really like to hear some of that reframed. We have students that, that is a huge benefit. And then particularly at Whittier, you know, like if they got to go to Newport Harbor and have IB, that's a huge pathway for them. So I just, I think we need to start reframing that conversation as viewing it as, as a deficit because we have a lot of students who are learning two languages. And then I also just wanted to highlight some of the things that I heard from several parents. Several parents, I mean, I've heard this for years and I think it's a big value, but it was highlighted in a lot of the comments that one of the problems that we've seen in how we have gotten to this place is because we have so many transfers going out of our schools. And one of the shared values that we have as a board has been we want to invest in neighborhood schools. We want, you know, our neighborhood communities to be intact as much as possible. But at the same time, we're creating huge pathways for kids to leave. So if we, if we start limiting or having conversations or thinking through, what does it look like if we are investing? If you live in your neighborhood school and you go the whole way, all of our middle schools are going to look better. All of our high schools are going to look better. So I, I would really like at some point to have a conversation about elementary transfers because it really, particularly in my neighborhood, it has destroyed a lot of community and it's not a benefit. I'd also just that the facilities numbers to me were really staggering. If T-Winkle right now can have 915 students and it only has 537, that's on us. We need to change those numbers. Again, with the transfers, I think that's a big piece of it. But then also too, if Ensen can have 1,433, but it only has 975, when CDM is maxed out and Costa Mesa Middle is almost maxed out, there's, some of the things we heard today are those reasons why those two schools are getting so many students. And lastly, I saw in here, one of the options is waiting until 2024. For me, there's a sense of urgency around this. I think middle school is only two years. So if we have a student right now who's in sixth grade, like my friend at Wilson, if we don't do this till 2024, it's going to bypass her. We have students from middle school now that Spanish for Spanish speakers is a, would be a huge asset for them. So I would just urge that we consider, you know, there's something we, we address as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Trustee, I think it was trustee or Soylu and then trustee Crane.
Yes. No, I just wanted to thank everyone for all of their comments and feedback and their insights. And I just know that this next phase where we engage at the sites in particular, to follow up with trustee Anderson's point, hearing from the kids, I'd like to hear from the high school students because hindsight's always 2020. So the middle schoolers that are in the mix might not be cognizant of what it is that they need. But if you ask the ninth or 10th graders, they're going to know what they would have liked to have, you know, last year as well. So I don't want to leave them out, the ones that recently just went through that process. And also the young parents, I don't want these engagements to be just the parents, no offense to parents of middle schoolers, but I want it to be the parents of the second graders and the third graders across my district that are leaving in epic numbers for other alternatives because they don't see the pathway through a T-Winkle that meets their needs. So I want to make sure that we include the young parents in their feedback in the process. And I just want to thank again, all the parents who managed to come here during an afternoon meeting. I really appreciate you taking the time because I absolutely know how hard it was to get here. So thank you, everybody.
Trustee Crane.
Couple of questions. I had a question for Dr. Quong. Dr. Gogel mentioned the, the social emotional aspect of a transition from sixth grade to a block schedule as far as fatigue or stress. Are you seeing some of that at Mesa High School? Would you, like, do you agree? Do you see some of it? Is it to what degree?
I can't say it's a high number. I know that there has been a few cases here and there. I don't have that quantifiable number right now, but it is a big transition, right, to go from one, one teacher all day long to now eight different teachers for over eight different courses. For the most part, I think our students do a good job of balancing and able to enjoy it. We have had some instances in my last couple of years where through the IEP process or through the 504, make some accommodations to kind of reduce your schedule. If there's one thing that I would ask is, you know, for the board to provide, you know, me or us with that flexibility to grant those requests for, for any student or any family who's reaching out to say, hey, age too much, can we just stick to the core and, you know, stick to the, the four required courses plus PE and then, and then try that for a quarter or two. So that way it can help build up their endurance for the courses. I think that would go a long way to supporting us, most of our families. And I can create a waiver where they sign off and say, you know, we're taking the responsibility of leaving early, you know, at 1:30 and things like that. But I don't, I don't see an overwhelming, you know, majority of our kids wanting to, to reduce their, their course load. But there has been cases.
Okay. And secondly, if we, the requests from staff that the, the data regarding teaching core minutes in correlation to student achievement data, that's really important to me, seeing on whichever slide it was that showed the data of achievement and, and how the block schedule almost has a direct relationship to student output and achievement data. If we can see if that's apples to apples, as Dr. Soylu had mentioned, that it, there could be a deviation.
Yeah, I'll provide some additional historical testing data, just to be able to give you a few more years. We also have to just remember that the assessment changed in the midst of that. So we went from CST to SBAK COVID punctuated moment in time. And then now we're going back into SBAK. So we'll clarify all that for you. But I'll work with our director of assessment to go ahead and prepare something. Thank you.
You, you may too want to look at different data, right? We didn't mention student engagement data. And so if the suggestion is when having more elective students are more engaged, then what would our local measurements look like at those different schools? And one thing you could look at is graduation rates and, and how do those students, based on their engagement, graduate? Because the SBAK data, given what we've been through, we all know doesn't give us a ton of information. But I think the point was to, to look at how we're impacting those core instructional minutes as we make these decisions.
Right.
But what else are we impacting that, that could create outcomes down the line, sharpening the saw, if you will? So I think there are other data points, if you will, if you'd support that, that we could bring to you.
Absolutely. And I just want to say thank you very much for holding the conversation and acknowledging that this is a great topic for us to discuss. You have a lot of passionate educational leaders in the room who care a lot about kids and want to do the right thing by providing the best opportunities for students. So we look forward to the work and next steps.
Thank you. And I had some comments, but I want, and I'm going to let anyone else who wants to go first. I, I think that in some places it said that we would go till 5:30 and other places, I think it was posted till 6:00. So my understanding is that we'll be here till 6:00. And so anyone wants to, on the board wants to get their comments and now and then I'll add mine in later. We've got trustee Matoye and trustee Wigan.
It left. It was Teflon for a moment. That, that will be the question that's posed to our student board members. What, what was your middle school experience like? And what, it just seemed to tie right in. I did invite them to watch, if you're watching high middle school, I mean, student board members, yay. And if they aren't, they were invited to make sure that they had the information. And the other thing is, I would like it to go on the record that we as a board know how impacted every single staff person, from anyone who touches a paperclip to anyone who's had to work with anybody. We are right now stretched to the middle, but this is such an important topic. We couldn't keep delaying it because of Omicron and the next letter of the alphabet virus that'll come up. Because it is getting on in a year. And, and I, I shudder because I know what it takes to do a notebook like this and the hours while you're doing it in between cohort testing and handing out the masks and making sure the kids are doing great and maybe teaching a class because you didn't have enough teachers. So thank you from the bottom of our hearts. We know that we put more rocks on the swimmers and didn't mean to, but we have to get this done right away. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Wigan and then trustee Anderson.
My question would follow trustee Crane's question, but about, I had asked, when did Mesa and CDM start their block scheduling for middle school? And if, if I can do math in my head, which probably my son could do better, and he's in first grade, they would probably be in a senior or have graduated based on that data, right? So we'd have seen them almost get all the way through. So I think that's an interesting, I guess, data point that we can and ask those seniors or people that, you know, juniors, whatever they, how, how did that, how are we seeing that different from when they didn't, we didn't offer a block schedule for middle school?
And we have those students that are still present, you know, we have them, we have them captive. So we can give them a survey and/or do a focus group. And that's something actually that Vanessa Gailey and I, who she is in the audience this evening, when we were talking about ALCAP engagement and having that additional layer of deeper engagement, we talked about doing student focus groups. So this is something that we could, we could do.
Yeah, that's great. Because it does concern me about being stressed. And I do remember kid, you know, going from having just, you know, maybe four or five subjects to eight, you know, it, so I want to, yeah, it's good to see what the kids would feel about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Anderson.
Thanks. I just wanted to say thank you, Dr. Torres, for making some of those fast switches for things that, you know, we may have a while to go to implement some things. But I thank you so much for several of those things that have been added at T-Winkle this year, like the speech and debate and the after-school Spanish. And I don't often get to see all of our secondary people. So I just want to say thank you. Every time I have a conversation with each of you, you do center your students in everything that you do. And I know it's been such a hard year. So thank you for being here. And I just wanted to say thank you for all you do.
Appreciate that.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yeah, I just, I don't want to belabor it, but I just want to go back to the student achievement because people have now started making the correlation with student achievement. And, and I really think we should hold off on that till we know a little bit more because I'm, I'm not sure that's the reason. And I know Dr. Bolton is here, but I remember, I don't know how many years ago it was, six or seven, when both CDM and Newport Harbor, their test scores went down dramatically. And it was basically because the kids didn't feel it was that important. And so there's a lot of other reasons like that, like why students may not do well, especially, you know, you have these, as we've described them, squirmy middle school kids. And they may just, you know, when they're in sixth grade, everything is important, like that they're, they're doing to move on. They may not as, quote, take it as seriously when they go there. And then I know the next year, when there was an effort put in, this really matters. It matters for our school. It matters how the outside world looks to it. The scores went up immediately. And so I, I, I just when people say, well, we already see there's a correlation between student achievement and the block schedule or whatever. And, and I just, I hope we can hold off on that kind of definitive comment.
Yeah. And we're not making any leaps of faith into that data. It's just a data set for us to put, to put in front of us, for us to consider.
And then just, I, just to confirm, because there was a comment that I know CDM is over capacity. If you look at what their capacity is, they obviously use areas of the high school. But the enrollment has been going down. It's not going up. And that's another thing we have to consider for a school like CDM because they're also competing heavily with private schools. And a lot of the comments we got from CDM parents in terms of electives they would like, actually were a list that came from a private school. So they're looking at those kinds of things, which also has to be a consideration in all of this.
Yes, thank you.
So my comments, I just wanted to echo the importance of surveying and listening to our students for these electives. I was walking through the kitchen as I was getting ready for this meeting a couple of days ago and just said, hey, anyone want to come to a middle school elective study session? And my fifth and eighth grader were like, yes, we would love to come. And I'm like, really? That sounds like a lot of work for me. But, but they're very engaged and they had firm ideas on what they wanted to do. So Samantha, I'm sorry if my fifth grader starts a petition for Latin. He really wants to see that in junior high. But, but I also want to know what's involved with how we look at our electives. I know I hear a lot of times people didn't get their first choice or their second choice. I hear that at Ensen. Oh, all the schools. How do we determine, you know, if we, you know, if we've got six kids that we need to put into an elective and we have to move them around? What's our process for that?
And so that's something that starts actually in a couple, couple of weeks here as we get ready for registration and we start to look at the numbers and see where the interest is and what we currently have. And we have something here too called off ratio sections that we give our, I don't want to say give, but we allocate to our schools to help offset any growth in certain areas where we might need a little bit more or we have a specialized program. And so then we can add. Sometimes we're not able to do that. There's just, we're packed. We also, you know, know that they, hey, maybe we are maxed out in every single class, but yet we don't have enough for another one. So principals typically come forward and ask So principals typically come forward and ask for that or have a conversation and say, you know, I've got 12 kids who are interested in taking this course. And sometimes we push back and say, can you get me four more? And then we'll make it a course. And so there is a process to all of it. It's really not terribly cut and dry sometimes. It is that conversation and figuring out where, where do we want to resource? And where, where do we have interest? And, you know, do we have teachers interested in teaching? And so there's a lot of factors that we look at.
Okay, thank you. What's the purpose of SSR?
Well, we could probably have Dr. Shaka talk about that because he's the longest-standing principal of Enson in the room. Because it has multi, many different reasons why schools institute that. But do you want to talk about SSR, Dr. Shaka?
Sure, very frankly. So SSR stands for Silent Sustained Reading, but it's really being used for one of three purposes, at least at Enson. One is for Silent Sustained Reading. Back in the day, there was, there was a movement to provide reading time for students. So some of the classrooms utilize it for Silent Sustained Reading. Other classrooms use it for, let's call it, work support. Students are able to do their homework. They get the supports from their teacher to just get caught up in that time to lessen, lessen the burden of after-school homework. And then third is when there's some enrichment opportunities running. So some clubs meet during that time. You know, some of our specialty programs tend to run during that time. So it's used for one of those three reasons.
Thank you. It seems like a great way to reduce stress, but as I'm looking at, and I see that in my students, they have that time. So as I look through how we can make more things work, I'm like, maybe we cut that. But I, for mental health, I think it's a good thing. Last question or just a sort of a comment. One thing I've heard over and over again and kind of seen is the desire for kind of a, you know, we're unique, we're K-12 and being able to be a K-12 in each of our zones and kind of engaging those elementary families with, with their local high school through whatever programs those high school students put on, whether we're inviting our elementary schools to that. I see that really, really strongly in my zone going back a few generations. And I know a lot of people stay in the same place and raise their kids where they grew up. And I think that's really great. And it's not the same across the district in that way, but in a lot of places it is. I think we have such an opportunity there that I love as we're exploring sort of these electives, how do we explore, you know, other reasons that people send their kids to that 7th grade or that 9th grade beyond just electives, but more because they feel part of that community going forward.
Trustee Barto, can you explain what you mean? Do you mean inviting the elementary families to a play or a football game, that type of thing? Or like more community engagement?
Yeah, I'll just give you a personal example.
Relational type events?
At Heights, you know, you have a lot of families who partially because they grew up there, but just for other reasons, they'll take their Heights kids to a football game at Newport Harbor. And you'll, I'll go there with my, you know, with my kids. And I've got a 4th, a 5th, a 7th, and 8th. And I'll go and I'll see all of their friends from Heights, from Enson, coming to this Newport Harbor football game. And, or plays or things like that. There's a really strong kind of idea that, you know, or Mariners families. There's that, this is your activity to do is put on by your junior high or your high school for your elementary kids or your junior high kids. It was really great. My son, who is in orchestra, was so excited to perform in the high school orchestra concert. That was really bridging a gap for him to see like, okay, like I wasn't sure I wanted to play cello in high school, but I could visualize myself playing for Harbor. And, and I think, I think that's a really important piece that is not just about the electives, but sort of building that community. So as we, even though this is about electives, I want to see how we kind of bring that in because one of our other goals and priorities as a board was to make our zone schools kind of that family.
John and I can take note of that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't realize I had a button until the fourth meeting here. So whatever that means for my personal growth. I want to make sure the trustees are empowered tonight to make sure that as we wrap up, whenever that is, that today was of value for them. So anything you need to share, so that we need to know, you know, are clear on what we need to work on, rather, let's, let's make sure you do that. I want the team to be responsive to your needs. I want to make sure that the parents know too that, well, we have an obligation and that's what we're talking about tonight, to make sure that our, our, our school day during those instructional minutes has equitable access and opportunities for all students. Period. That's what we're talking about and that's what we're going to, we're going to work on. And not just work on, but fix in this district. We also have other board goals that are going to support these rich learning opportunities. I just want to make sure that folks watching, that our parents are aware of this as well. Again, it doesn't take away the responsibility for what we're talking about today. But we are looking at expanding learning opportunities throughout the district. Before school, after school, and intercession and providing these rich opportunities for enrichment, greater engagement, all of those things as well. So while some of these things may take time, I think one of the discomforts when we ask, well, what's the timeline? Well, what's the timeline based on the decision being made? When's the decision made? You know, you can't really start tolling that timeline till you know what we're doing. And, you know, we want to talk to students. We want to talk more to parents, as you've put in memos and emails, in their environments. But when we get there, then we'll have an appropriate timeline that goes fast enough to serve students, but slow enough that it's something we can sustain so that it's effective. But in the meantime, there are things we can do. And I think Dr. Torres and the group have demonstrated, they can do things now. Right now, our team's working on expanding learning opportunities. Those are things we can do soon. And so we don't want parents to lose faith. We're going to continue working on this. This is the big ticket item. We're also going to expand those learning opportunities for those folks that can come before school and can stay after school. And that's not everybody and I get that. That's why the school day is our obligation. It's, it's our, it's our moral responsibility, quite honestly. But we're also going to do other things. So this is exciting. I wanted to make sure they know that. We're going to do some things soon. And we're already doing things in those areas. And, you know, we've got folks in the room, again, we've got parents that took their time and it wasn't easy, as Trustee Orsoilu said, but they're here. We have administrators that have been leaning into this conversation, folks from the secondary, our, our middle grades, folks and others. We're here. Labor's still here. They're listening, right? Well, what do we do? It's exciting having these conversations. So if you're at home watching, just know, we're going to do a lot. We're going to do a lot. We're going to do some on different phases and timelines and we're going to get to all of it. But just didn't want people to lose sight of the board having multiple goals and ELOPs being one of them.
Thank you. Any additional comments? I think we got through almost everything I heard everyone talk to me about in the last few days. I think the only thing that I just recalled that someone told me was part of that we wanted to look at when we're looking at that K-12 kind, and we've mentioned this before, that kind of understanding what our K through 6 offer so that, how that feeds into 7th, 8th, and feed into 9th through 12th. So if there's information, right. So I think that's the only piece of information I forgot to specifically say we would love to see. I've heard it from a few trustees and just the, as an idea from, from the sites as well.
And we put together a very simple table for you in there. There's a section in your folder. And there'll be more to come because we were collecting information as that request came through. But there's a simple table that says Elementary, Middle, and High School by Enson, T-Winkle. Take a look at that and see if that kind of gives you a level of information. And again, we'll continue to provide more as we get more feedback from some of our special, specialized instructors that we have that provide stuff at our campuses, at our elementary particularly.
Thank you. Trustee Anderson.
Thank you. That follows up on a question that I have that I've actually heard from several 6th grade teachers. Because the process before, it seems like the teachers were kind of getting information to talk through what electives their students would want to take. And some teachers felt a lot of pressure that it was on them to make some of those decisions. And then I've heard from some parents that were like, these decisions seem like they were made not by my teacher or by me. How does that process work? So I think if we can elaborate kind of the steps for our 6th grade teachers and our parents, that would really help tremendously. So I think for next year specifically, if we can get, you know, just to like, here are the four steps. Here's what the process looks like because I think there's a lot of confusion around that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We can work with our middle school counselors and, and leadership. Thank you.
And I just want to thank you so much. This was a really robust study session. I feel like we have a lot to, we studied a lot, but we also have a lot to study. But I think it was, it was really great. And I personally think it's always very challenging to kind of think through a lot of information like this. Thinking in public is never super comfortable and then having to speak on that. So I think that this is a really great start and I'm glad to hear that there's this, this excitement from everyone to go forward because this was a really great step.
The page on elementary music ensembles. If, if they're not on this page, does that mean they don't have anything? Because I saw that Sonora, Whittier, and Wilson are missing. It looked alphabetically like, oops.
Possibly, maybe a page got torn off, but I'll let John look at that because I'm not aware that they wouldn't.
I'll look at, I'll look at that, Trustee Matoye.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And also, Cloud is giving us opportunities and not, and so I'm excited to be able to think about Cloud for middle school too. And we haven't included them. I think they might have more flexibilities because you can bring somebody in. But it would be nice to, in the future, know where that's headed too because it's so exciting to have that opportunity.
Yeah, Cloud's, Cloud's schedules, it's crazy. I'll just say that. So it's great, it's great and crazy all in one. So yes, we can come back at another time.
Oh yeah, please, I'm not asking for a study study.
We can provide that to you. Thank you.
I move that we adjourn the meeting at 5:51.
Second.
I'll say all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned at 5:51 PM. Thank you very much.